Start with Roll Paul on my left. It's no Boise. Carla Stratus. Okay, so I will appoint Roxanne Boise for Lindsay. So we have public hearings tonight. Z 2018 1452 of Sammy P Inc. Requesting a map amendment from RA 30 to I-1 zoning district For property located at 495 Norwich Road, Plainfield, Map 1P Block 53, Lot 20. Is someone here to speak for the applicant? Yep, so if you could come on up to the microphone And let us know the change you're wishing to, you're requesting.
Is there anything else you want me to tell you?
Your name and what you're here to do.
Okay, my name is Sammy Petrowski, Spelled P-I-O-T-R-K-O-W-S-K-I. I purchased property at 495 Norwich Road, Plainfield, Connecticut with the intention of developing it. Because of certain features that the property has, I chose to try to develop this property to an industrial zone. It has a railroad siding in the back of the property. It has access, direct access on Route 12 Norwich Road. And has the availability of city sewer, city water, And I believe gas as well on Route 12. The properties that are in that area down Cemetery Road Are also zoned industrial Z1. Osterman Fuel is Z1, I believe PNW Railroad is Z1. Ryder is Z1 and ABF Trucking is Z1. My intention since I, the beginning, Since buying the property was to develop it. If, I know that there's a lot of social media that's out there. I don't know if it's the right time to address it. But I know that I do not have an application In front of this board for a landfill, a transfer station. I do, from what I read in the zoning of industrial, That it does allow for transportation. It does allow for warehousing. And it does allow for distribution. I know that some of the things that people are concerned That I had intentions of putting there or building there Would require a special permit, Which would have to come before this board. And I do not have any application like that before this board. If this board determines that that is not the highest And best use for this property, it is zoned R-30, Then I will meet with my engineers And try to come up with another plan That I can make work for that property. But it was with the intention of developing it. Okay?
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Alright, so this is a public hearing. We're gonna start with the people who signed in. So the first speaker will be Randall Long, Cemetery Room. And because of the amount of people here And in respect of everybody's time, We're gonna limit everyone to five minutes each. If you have more to say, You can come back for round two Once everybody has had their opportunity, okay?
Hi, I live at 11 Cemetery Road. It's the little gray house at the top of the hill, Right across from the properties. A lot of people travel down that road And there's a lot of traffic. We have pictures to show it. Tonight before I got here, The traffic was backed up to four corners Because of the railroad traffic. We have way too much commercial traffic. We have ABF, we have Boston, We have Ryder, we have Providence and Worcester Railroad. And it just keeps going on and on. I've called the Plainfield Police, Asked them if they could run radar. They said they can't do it. They don't have enough manpower. These trucks are coming through the four corners And I'm, I promise you, 60, 65 miles an hour. I drive truck for a living, so I pretty much know. I don't think it's a good place. I mean, I've called the Plainfield Police several times. My wife's right here because of accidents. We have at least seven good accidents there a year. It's just too busy of an intersection to have industrial. Industrial one, I read up on it. I don't know if I'm right or wrong. But it says, once it goes industrial one, Pretty much can go anywhere. And to me, it's not a place to go industrial. If they wanna do something like that, Go over to the dog track or something. Don't put it right in the center of town. Especially with a historic house on it. And that's my biggest concern. I know a lot of people, they walk by our house Up and down the hill, they exercise and stuff. And the traffic is just unbearable. You know, I'm out there every day in the summertime After work with my grandsons. And I, I see it all. I have it on my phone, I took the videos. Just before the meeting, last meeting we had, I showed the gentleman over there picture Of the train across the track down at the bottom. Now, Mr. Petrowski said because of the railroad tracks. Now, I have all gravel and stuff out of the hot gills. And that train is there constantly. My daughter lives in the condos. It took her 45 minutes to get to my house the other night Because of the train. We don't need anymore, not down that hill. I just think it's too busy. You know, it's too noisy. You can't sleep that night. We get up at 4:43 in the morning, my wife and I. The trucks are up and down that hill all night long. And that, that's it. I'm against it. I don't think it's a place for it. Commercial, selling trucks to snowplows? I'm all for it, but not industrial. That's not the place. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sherri Wozniak, Cemetery Room.
Good evening, my last name is W O Z N I A K. And I'm here to show my opposition for the rezoning. And it's basically because of safety. I reviewed your plan of conservation and development. And you, as the committee have mentioned several times, Of this area from the senior center To through the historic center, That it's a major traffic collector. Increased traffic, high volume traffic, intense traffic flow. We have accidents on top of the hill many times in the year. The traffic comes flying down through Cemetery Road. I can't even get my mail until at night when there's less traffic. Why not cemetery road intersection? One, the train, when the train is at the bottom of the hill, The traffic builds up until the stoplight. If we have more industrial, larger vehicles in that lane of traffic, Then more traffic is gonna be stopped on Route 12 Or 14A waiting to get down into the road. So you're gonna have some congestion and stop traffic right there. Let's see, winter snow hazards. The hill is impassable at times before the plows come out. So that would be another concern. And the goal of this committee Is to preserve and protect the historic buildings and areas. Particularly the revitalization of core historic villages, Which we're talking about, right on top of the main road Right there on Route 12. That's the historic center. And you're, you know, concerned in putting An industrial business there, Which will take away from what the Green Valley goal is in Plainfield. So I think that we really need to think of, Of what we want to, what we want, look, I mean, Your plan is for, you just made this. You, you just adopted it in August, on August 8th, 2018. And it's to preserve the town's natural historical And agricultural resources and rural environment. The town is an important contributor to the last Green Valley And should work to maintain that level of contribution. And I think if we, we change this rezoning, That we're going against what your goal is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ed Como, Norwich Road.
My name is Ed Como. I live at 280 Norwich Road in Plainfield. I only have a couple of questions. Where does Mr. Petrowski live?
I don't think that's relevant to the application. So tonight's application is in regards to a zone change. So personal.
Alright, well, he doesn't, he doesn't live in this town. In other words, he don't live here. And I thought we had an industrial park for industrial use. We don't need industrial in the center of town. That's all I can say.
Thank you very much. Ruth Bergeron, Starkweather Road.
I'm Ruth Bergeron from 137 Starkweather Road, Also at the Plainfield Historical Society. I'm here with just a few statements of fact tonight That I want to be sure presented in plainly. Cemetery Road is a national historic trail. And 2009 Congress passed this as part of an omnibus act. And in more recent time, with more interest In historical things and tourism, There has been more use of this and it's coming around again and again. We are very, very important here in Plainfield In that in the American Revolutionary War, They had sent four regents of military to help George Washington. They came out of Newport, down through Sterling, Down Academy Hill Road, down Cemetery Road, Making it especially important spot. They camped at the base of the hill there. And then continued on across, meeting George Washington. And with, joined with him and then, and the, then Let Yorktown defeat the British And ended the American Revolutionary War. So we have a very sensitive spot on our hand here. Cemetery Road plus 495 Norwich Road. And for that reason, I think we need to take All of these things into consideration. Another feature is the, as most of us haven't seen, The brown sign saying, "Plainfield Street Historic District." And it comes north past many important structures, Including the Stone Church, which is very famous. And it ends, it terminates north of Cemetery Road. This was made a historic district for very good reasons. It's a great asset to the town And something I think we have to consider In all matters affecting that and anything near it. And the other thing I want to mention Is the house on the property, built in 1855 For an Nathaniel Owen, who was prominent, Who was a wealthy farmer, a mason, who lived there. And this house is still standing as it was originally constructed, With an L to one side and a wing to the rear. But it's still the original 1855 structure. It is registered on the Connecticut Register of Historic Buildings. It was surveyed in 1980 and deemed very highly qualified for that. So that's another thing we have to consider In all of the things that are affecting this particular area. I have support down to the street.
Michael Marzilli, Norwich Road.
Hi, I live at 462 Norwich Road. Many of the items I have listed here, Were already touched on by previous people, the traffic, Safety issues. I've seen several accidents at that intersection. Something to think about as well, With the potential for tolls to be placed on highways, 395. That might increase the traffic flow on Route 12 As people try to divert to get out and paying the tolls, Which will increase the traffic flow on Route 12, Which will just make the problem at the intersection much worse. Additionally, when you go to industrial, You're inviting pretty much anything to be built there, Which could have impacts on environment pollution As well as the traffic. Additionally, you'll have to deal with property values Because who wants to move next to an industrial area? The historic issue was just brought up. And just doing this would invite further industrialization Of a historical residential area. I don't think that's the way that the Plainfield should go. And that's about it.
Thank you. Walter Leclair, Terrace Drive. And if a point has already been made, If you can just mention that you're agreeing with the previous point. That would be helpful.
Well, if it's already been made.
Okay.
I do want to mention one other thing.
Absolutely.
I live at 500 Terrace Drive, Down in a nice peaceful little alcove With 35 of trailers. We've had that screen that's on that road Of trees, brush and so forth, Which kept a lot of noise away from us. The only trouble that we've had in our area Are different things like ambulances and so forth Because it's an over 55 area. We've had no crime, no pollution, or nothing like that. It's been beautiful down there. And I'd like to see it continue in the same vein that it has been. I've been there for over 11 years now. And I'd like to die there in the same way. As far as outside of what everybody else has said.
Thank you. Megan Jacobs, Norwich Road.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm Megan Jacobs of 503 Norwich Road. And I'm here to explain my reasons For opposing the zoning change to 495. Red Homes are close to it within a half mile. And I think my main position of opposition Is just that it's in such a densely populated residential area. And I don't think that's ideal For welcoming an industrial facility. I've also looked at several pages straight From the zoning board's Plan of Conservation and Development, Which as someone else mentioned, Was adopted just this past year in August For historic preservation. And I'm sorry, can I ask for those lights to go back on? I'm having trouble breathing from my. I appreciate that you're trying to be helpful.
Turn the lights on. That's perfect, thank you. I think it should pop right back up. Fingers crossed.
Thank you for your patience. There we go. From the Town Zone Plan of Conservation and Development, This one's from page 13, talking about our intention To preserve historic properties. I've highlighted a few of the sentences from this document. Preserve and protect historic buildings and areas, Particularly the revitalization of core historic villages. Require that future town decisions regarding growth and development, Including planning for capital improvement, Be sensitive to these historic resources. And then right next to it, I've circled From the National Register of Historic Places, That address 495 Norwich Road. It is supposed to be a protected property. More from the National Register of Historic Places. Here's a picture of the house that we're talking about. It's not only abutting and surrounded by historic properties, The address itself is supposed to be historically protected. Another concern that I and others have mentioned Is the water quality. This property is directly uphill From an aquifer that's supposed to be protected, Horsebrook. From page 25 of the town's Plan of Conservation and Development document, Preserve and protect the high quality Of the town's surface and groundwaterers. Prohibit new or increased high-risk activities That could adversely affect surface or groundwater resources. And I know it's hard to see, But I've circled that the property in question Is directly uphill from Horsebrook. And from page 22 of that document, Millbrook and Horsebrook are important aquifer recharge waterways And should be preserved. So I know it's part of our town's own goals To do justice to these properties. Another concern, I know many folks have talked about traffic From page 98 of that same document, Plan of Conservation and Development. Route 12, this area is one of the oldest sections Of the town in Plainfield. There are many concerns about the future Of the historic district and future growth. This section is fairly wide and handles a high volume of traffic. But effort should be made to preserve The integrity of the historic district. I know someone else has mentioned air quality. If, no matter what kind of industrial facility This turns into, it's likely that there would be Idling of heavy-duty vehicles. And I've highlighted some statistics from EPA.com Explaining that the air pollutants that are put into Surrounding air by heavy-duty vehicles Are often more than double the negative pollutants Released into the air. And Randy Long mentioned earlier tonight That we have huge concerns about traffic. Residents already deal with a high amount of traffic And congestion at this intersection And all the way down Cemetery Road. These three pictures show that congestion. Plainfield Police report that there have been 10 accidents Since 2017 at that intersection. Don't need anything that would increase that congestion. And in terms of the kind of development Or the kind of lifestyle that I think We do want to promote in our town. This is our property behind our house, Being paid in this picture by my husband. This field has been our family.
Megan, you've just hit the five-minute mark. So I just want to give other people opportunity And then we can come back to you to finish.
Okay. I've got one page left, just with closing. Can I do one page left or should I?
Let's get to the other people who want to speak And then you'll be able to wrap up.
Thanks.
So next on the list is Sammy Petrowski.
I already spoke. I already.
Oh, you already spoke.
Yeah.
Was there anyone else who has not spoken Who wishes to speak? Yes. That's okay. It's still open, so no problem.
My name is Madeline Persilow. And I'm not speaking as a celebrity tonight. I'm speaking as a lifelong resident of Plainfield, Who has lived here my whole life. And I feel that as a community in a town We've been very lax in preserving our historical district And even our main street. I would like to see our main street improve in such a way That when people come out of town, They're excited and they want to see something attractive, Something nice and see the preservation of our town. I am very much against any commercial developing along Route 12. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken?
I'm Chris Wright, 24 Bell Road. I know there's a lot of industrial in the area. We're obviously not doing anything about what's existing there, But we don't need any more noises out of the end, the traffic. Gonna worry about well water. We don't know what he's gonna bring in after he's approved. Just a lot of questions up in the air. And we definitely don't need any more industrial in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken yet? Please come to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Anna Lyle, 29 Bell Road. I know we've talked a lot about the traffic concerns, But I would like to talk specifically about them. Buses use that road every single day. So the town's children are being bused in on that road. And a lot of parents bring their children to school on that road. Plainfield Central School, Plainfield Central School, And Temple Memorial School. That's probably half of our children in this town. So that really concerns me. Both my neighbor and my husband have both been in accidents On that intersection. So they're two of the 20 that have had accidents. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, come on up.
Diane McBroom, 51 Oakwood, Loharn. We heard what the plan is not going to be, But did we hear what the plan is going to be? Something be approved without knowing What is gonna be going in there?
At this time, the application is just for the zone change. So it would allow any industrial use That's allowed by right or by special permit per the regulations. So there is no specific activity. It's a zone change at this time.
You approve something without knowing what it is.
So the application is for the zone change. Anyone else who has not spoken who wishes to?
What's the board's position?
We have to take all the information from the public And we'll deliberate once the public hearing is over.
Deliberate with who? The public?
Sir, if you want to speak, You're welcome to come to the microphone.
I'm speaking now, sir.
Yep, but we have a gentleman at the microphone waiting his turn.
Let him go.
Yep, but you can certainly speak after him, State your name and address for the record.
Ed Shippin, Pikeville Road, Plainfield. One concern everybody seems to be missing here, Especially Mr. Petrowski. Any kind of industrial development in that lot, on that hill, It's gonna be very hard to get truck traffic In and out of that piece of land. And all you have to do is drive up and down that road in the wintertime. I have a station right at the bottom of the hill. And it's not a safe place to have trucks turn at all. Level mind just going up and down here. I've seen a number of tractor trailers going sideways And doing curly cues down that hill. And it's, it's just not a good place To try to get a big truck into. And it is limited to its amount of area. So you gotta look at the safety aspect of this. I didn't hear anybody else mention that.
Thank you.
What is the board's position?
We do not make.
You heard the arguments.
Yep, the process is public hearing. We take input. When the public hearing is closed, We will deliberate and make our decision To make any determination.
You're gonna make your decision public or you're gonna make it?
Oh, no, it's a public meeting. So when we get to that part of the meeting, You're certainly welcome to say. Excuse me?
If it's opposed, what's your position?
We have to wait till the public hearing is closed. For us to make any determination during the public hearing Would be prejudiced.
What's your position now?
I won't discuss anything until we deliberate.
This is the public hearing During which the commission hears testimony from the public. Once that's done, we'll talk among the.
We've heard the commission from the public. We've heard all the complaints and.
But there's still people waiting to talk. And our.
Bring them up.
Our esteemed is waiting to finish, so. Is there anyone else who wants to speak Before we let Megan finish her presentation?
My name is Bryce Pollock. I live at 36 Connecticut Drive. My main concern with this is If we allow this to happen on this property, It's kinda setting a precedent for any other properties Along Route 12 That their property happens to border the railroad. I'm assuming that the railroad is really The main selling point of this property. Otherwise, I don't really see a reason To put an industrial zone In the middle of a historical spot in town. So if we set the precedent by allowing this to happen, And so 15 years into the future now, Any of the properties that happen to border The back of the railroad down there Could now be bought And have an argument for turning that zoning into industrial. And we could be replicating this down the whole strip. When in your historical preservation for the town, The policies plan, I mean, it's stated in here numerous times That the town's goal is to protect Historical property within the town And discourage strip development along Route 12 In areas where such development threatens historic resources. That's number six on the intentions In, in the policies plan. So I, I just don't think it'd be a good idea. While we're looking at this one property now, What could happen 20 years down the road? A lot of people may not even be alive here, But even your kids that have to deal with even more trucks And even more traffic. Somebody mentioned the tolls. That was a really good point. Trucks try to avoid tolls And just bring more traffic into town where we can't. We don't have the ability to fix that. Route 12 is kinda stationary where it is And we're not gonna be able to shrink any of that traffic. So I think that just looking toward the future, I think if we need to take into consideration That this one plan, this one property That we plan for right now can set a precedent for the future Where this could happen all down Route 12. And I think that. And I think that since it's specifically inside this policies plan of the town, that to discourage the strip development, I think that it would be a real disservice to the residents of Plainfield if you guys okay this. We have an industrial park that we've been pushing, that we pushed and did some things we weren't supposed to do, and we really want to get that place filled up. And I think that that's just, that's spot for it, not in the middle of a historical district.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken?
Back town, moves upon. This one man in the heart of town buys a piece of property in a historical zone and zoned for that, and the board even considers changing it for one man. You know, the people might think about getting on another board, but that's just my opinion. But I don't see why you should change it for one man. It isn't going to bring those that over to the government. Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience who has not spoken? Okay, let's turn the floor back over to them.
I love how that previous speaker mentioned the importance of this decision for future generations in our town, and that's, I think, the biggest piece of my argument. This picture is of my son celebrating his first birthday in that field that he saw with the hay tractor equipment. It's directly across the street, just behind the tree line is the area that's being proposed to be zoned industrial. And I just have kind of a closing statement. My husband and I purchased the land at 503 Norwich Road, that my family has farmed for over 150 years, and we intend to cultivate a home environment with healthy children and clean air and green spaces so that future generations can continue to add to our town's history. The plan to create an industrial mess right across the street flies in the face of this goal and also threatens the nearby water source and threatens increasing traffic, disturbing the historical area, increasing air pollution, lowering the property values, and lowering the quality of life of the more than 100 families living directly within a half mile. Please don't make this zoning change. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who has any comments or questions on this application?
There's a part of the thing, if I could, my mom's only one.
Sure.
They brought up a few good points in that there have been a lot of people speaking of the places that have been used in manufacturing, used in commercial areas. These sites have been such an inter-rival. There are places around town here that could be utilized a heck of a lot better than going into a historical site. Thank you.
Thank you. And, yeah. And just if it's not repeating, something new.
Like I said, I live right across the street from the property. My wife and I have been there about 25 years. I knew Alex that owned the property. He was about 93 years old. I'm the one that found him and his wife that morning we used to go to check upon him. He used to cut nine quarters of wood, and he was out there every day making sure that property was pristine. He had a lot of metal and scrap metal, but he had it all hidden. You know what I'm saying? And that guy lived there for years. He moved in there, him and his wife when they got married, didn't even have it under the water. She had a pump in the kitchen. And for someone to take care of property like that, if he knew what it was, we shouldn't have changed it. And I think you're wrong if you guys told it, you know? But that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other comments from public? Or comments or questions staff? Okay. So we just have a letter signed by Walter Leclair submitted for the record. All right, so hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is closed, moving on to our next public hearing. Z 2018-1454, Continuation of Ecos Energy LLC, requesting special permit for construction of a 1-megawatt ground-mounted solar facility on property located on Plainfield Pike Route 14A, MAP 17, Block 36, Lot 69, Industrial Zoning District. Is the applicant here to speak?
Yeah. Chair Mike.
Oh, absolutely. Let the record show that John Meyer has recused himself from this application as he did in the previous month due to a work conflict. So I will seat Kathy Harris for John in this application.
Hello, my name is Steve Royer. I represent Ecos Energy, the developer of the solar facility. Last month I was here and I presented to the staff, to the board, and as well as the room, kind of the proposed footprint of the project, and I wasn't going to go through that again today, given my previous presentation. On the 18th of December, the project was heard by the Plainfield Inland Weapons Commission. It was approved for zero with no objections and no conditions of approval. Prior to my flight out here this morning, I did send a decommissioning plan to Ryan and Mary Ann to start their review of that document relating to a bond that would be placed to hold for the town to basically access cash if we were to go into default and not maintain the property, pull that solar facility out. There's semestral language in that decommissioning plan that will be to be reviewed by your council, as well as just determining what bank's holding that money, et cetera. It's my request that the project, given the inland weapons approval, be approved this evening with the condition for the applicant, such as ourselves, and the town's attorney to review that decommissioning bond and tie it to either the release of a building permit or something like that. Like I said, I did the biography from Minnesota, under the assumption that this project would likely be passed and not tabled during that decommissioning bond review. It's a form we've used on many projects, and I think it's something that we can easily hash out without an additional public hearing.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or question on this application? Any comments from staff?
We have a question. We would like also to review the stuff, and really the part that needs to be reviewed is for, as you said, the market. Yes, it's very technical, very legal. Do you see any issues with closing the public hearing with the condition that the staff received of this contract?
No, I don't think so, because that wouldn't change the land use portion of the application. I mean, you want to have that ironed out, but that wouldn't be something that would need, you know, additional public input, or something that could be negotiated, you know, directly affecting the scope or nature of the project or anything like that.
Any other comments or questions on this application?
I guess the only caveat I would say is that the commission itself wants to participate in that process, and we should continue here, but it's going to be done entirely, you know, staff and council, whether it's private or public. Firstly, as far as that goes, I don't have any problem with it, but the question doesn't consist, just any of those. I did, going through it, there is breakdown of...
Is there any way you guys would like to use your microphone?
Yeah, I'm here. So really, the question here is if the bond is adequate. And the bond is basically to break down the site should, you know, at the end of the project, make sure that the property is reclaimed, or if for some reason the company defaulted and failed to produce power and walked away from the site. The bond that we received or the proposal is for $49,662.44, and I just kind of question that it might be a little on the both side. I understand that typically, the amount that you receive in... Typically in these projects, the amount that you receive from recycled materials will cover the cost of reclaiming the site. However, we don't know what's going to happen 25, 30 years down the road, how much money is going to be in these recycled materials, if it's going to be more, if it's going to be less. So my only question is, should the bond be more? And one of the things I noticed that really jumped out is removal of the solar panels. A team of four people working for a 32-hour work week, so supposedly eight hours per day, removing 400 panels per day, and it works out to be about one panel per minute, which I think is rather unrealistic when you're removing panels and stacking. So I'm just questioning the bottom out, should the bond be a little more?
I ask you to that.
Sorry?
This bond was basically a template of a project that I built last year in the Town Spencer Mass, so a lot of those numbers were reviewed by a third-party engineer. I'm still willing to do that, to review that bond fee. I think, you know, haggling over $7,000 or $10,000 on a bond piece, this is not something that rewarants another trip to discuss. If you want to get a third-party engineer involved and review the way that we put the bond together, totally fine with that. I know that we'll also have to post a bond to inland weapons commission for our grading activities. I think there's a couple of layers to cover us if we want to perform a build project and have it successful. The other issue is just relating to that panel removal. My building project currently, right now, in Lebanon, Connecticut, and they're installing about a panel a minute. Given that it's scrap material, the care that they're going to take removing them versus installing them is going to be slightly different. Relating to the recycled materials, I only included raw materials in the site, the steel, the copper, aluminum. It's typically tied to the wire and the actual racking structure in the ground. I did not include any of the actual transformer, switch gear. A lot of those items have copper and stuff as well that could increase the value of the materials on the site. And trying to forecast anything 20 to 35 years from now, either the price of steel or the price of labor or the price of anything, it's really a black hole that you're throwing money into. We're here to say that we're willing to post a bond, and we're still willing to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else comment or question? Before, if any questions, they have to be, or staff. Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. It's like a...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. I'll unfortunately drop John. So I will call the regular meeting to order. I will be reseating John Meyer, and Kathy will return to her alternate status. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Citizen participation is opportunity for public comment not related to the public hearings that have already closed. Any comments from public on other issues? Okay. So moving on to item six, unfinished old business. Z 2018-1452, Sammy P. Inc., requesting map amendment from RA 30 to I 1, zoning district for property located at 495 Norwich Road, Plainfield, MAP 1P, Block 53, Lot 20. Items for discussion among board members. Okay, I'll kick it off. Being a member of the Plan of Conservation Development Committee that just, as indicated on the record, convened back in August for our 10-year plan, I think the points brought up about the historic and commercial issues on Route 12 are very valid, and they were items that we discussed in our year-and-a-half process on the Plan of Conservation Development Committee, of which most of us were members. With the Plan of Conservation and Development, it's a 10-year plan, and it's really our vision for how we want to see the town laid out and where we want to see things done. As many of you have indicated, we have an industrial park, and that is really primarily where we want to direct our industrial developments. But the commission does have the ability, if it seems reasonable and fits with the community, to put industrial in other areas as well. The points about the water protection, very valid. Water runs downhill, we understand that. One of the missions of planning and zoning is to ensure safe air and water for people, so that's definitely a concern of this commission. So looking at the application, at this time, I do not feel that industrial fits that area in order to stay in line with our Plan of Conservation and Development, which is our framework and our guide, and it's finding the balance between the needs of the businesses and the needs of the people. And that's a hard balance and tight-wired walk sometimes, but that's our job, and that's what people elected us to do. So looking at regulations, looking at what's allowed in industrial, at this time, I don't feel that those industrials will be best suited for that piece of property. So do any other commission members have any thoughts of discussion on this application?
Yeah, I'd like to add that also as a member of the Plan of Conservation and Development Committee, I concur with your thoughts, Carl. And, yes, there are industrial uses in that area, but many of those industrial uses go back a number of years. Certainly, they predate the last plan that was just written. And, you know, we've heard people give comments and testimony regarding the fact that changing this property from residential to industrial may have a long-term domino effect on the properties along the area, which would add to the inconsistency that industrial property would have on the character of the area, which, as we indicated in the plan, we are indicating needs to be preserved. So for that reason, actually specifically for that reason, I think the proposed zone change is inconsistent with the plan.
Any other discussion points for committee members? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
I make a motion to deny the application.
Okay, all in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to denial? Any extensions? Okay, the application is denied. Moving on to our next application. Yes. So moving on to our next item, Z 2018-1454, Ecos Energy LLC, requesting special permit for construction of a 1-megawatt ground-mounted solar facility on property located on Plainfield Pike Route 14A, MAP 17, Block 36, Lot 69, Industrial Zoning District. And Kathy Harris will be seated for John Meyer for his refusal. Items for discussion on this application?
Well, yes, we still have to iron out some of the details. I would say we can't delay discussion until next month. Hopefully, we'll have a real one.
Okay. So entertain a motion to continue to the next meeting. So given that the session they want to take place with the legal council about bond, they're requesting that we table the approval or denial of application until next month.
Make a motion.
they're requesting that we table the approval or denial of application until next month.
Make a motion to table the discussion until next month?
Do I have a second? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that has been continued to next month. Item C, Z 2018, oh, and John Meyer will be reseated and Kathy will be alternate again. Z 2018-1470 of Michael Sweeney, Locked Escape Adventure LLC, requesting a special permit for escape room business located at 12 Railroad Avenue, Unit 6, Musup, MAP 2M, block 95, lot 13, C2 zoning district. Given this is a special permit, it does require a public hearing, which could be scheduled for next month. Nope, it's listed. It needs to be scheduled. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for next month.
So the motion is scheduled for a public hearing next month?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that public hearing will be February-
12.
February 12th, 7:00 PM. It could be downstairs or upstairs, so location to be determined.
In a lock to see.
In a lock to see, yeah. Moving on to new business. Item A, Z 2018-1472 of Bruce Disco, requesting a map amendment from RA 19 to C2 zoning district for property located at 20 Babcock Ave and 2 Community Ave, Plainfield, MAP 2P, block 19A, lots 1 and 3. Since this is a map amendment, this also requires public hearing.
I make a motion that we send this to public hearing then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, scheduled for public hearing, February 12th, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, upstairs or down. Moving on to item eight, reviewing and acting on the minutes from the 12:11, that should be 18 meeting? If we can make that correction. Did anyone have any modifications or changes to the meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to correspondence.
Several items of correspondence. Four copies of Uncommon Brown. We have letters, the Bar Association. This is their annual Land Use Conference for, for commissions if anyone is interested.
It's a very good conference if you're able to attend.
It's very educational. It's kind of a crash course on everything you know about each special area.
What register? What lot? 22.
And it's all day then? It is by the Connect Bar Association, I believe. But it's at Wesleyan University in Middletown. So it's 8:30 AM till 4:30 PM. It's an all-day, but it's well worth it. If anybody's interested in that, you can just contact Mary Ann or Ryan.
I agree with you.
Yes. Any other correspondence? Okay.
It's an ongoing violation with law tires and others to any site around the house. The bank did foreclose on the property. The occupants have not held out, so they are working to get the occupants evicted. And once that happens, hopefully the bank takes care of the property.
And that's it? All right, a report from planning and zoning?
The only update I have that wasn't included in my report is that the ANX Project Selection Committee met and interviewed historic preservation architects for the State Historic Preservation Office grant for feasibility and adaptive reuse study for the ANX on the 3rd. And the committee made a recommendation to the board selection to give the contract to one of the consultants. So that's going to be on the board selection agenda for I.D. They'll get their move for 12. So that project is moving forward.
Any items to add under other? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.